Charles, what's wrong with the mics? Probably the most important meeting we're gonna have this year.
Now, the machine is still picking up. You're just gonna have to talk regularly. You can't wait for it.
Well, they're going to be in.
So is this for the cameras or for the livestream?
They can still hear you just fine. It's just these speakers right here.
Oh, okay. As long as it's live, break.
These don't work for the live stream. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and start this thing. We're gonna call this meeting to order in a special session. Wednesday, July the 30th. Missioners Court Room at 162 West First Street. Trinity County Courthouse, Grove, Kentucky. 758 Corvina. And then we'll receive an update from Ben Rosenberg after this. We're gonna pray and go.
I will. Not a problem. You join me in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for another day in the service of you. We ask you to be with us today as we receive these facts, God, and figures for our county. Let us operate, God, in the best of our integrity and ability for you. May everything that we do be pleasing to you and for the benefit of our great taxpayers of Trinity County. We thank you for your love, mercy, and grace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Ben Rosenberg, you're the Capitol. Our Katie, I mess up now.
I have a few facts and figures prepared by today. Thank you for allowing me to be here. And remember, I'm, the county hired me, I don't know how many years ago, to be your financial advisor. We're a banker. I work for a broker-dealer firm. We can help you borrow money. That's sort of what our main focus is. I don't work for the jail commission. I don't sponsor jails. I don't support jails. I don't help operate jails. All I do is help to borrow the money. All right? Well, we've talked about in the past, financing instruments that are available to counties. You're not allowed just to go to the bank and borrow money or something like this. The Texas Constitution has different statutes and different rules and regulations. The one we've been focusing on here for the last several years is a general obligation bond that requires a vote of the public in May or November, may of odd number of years. So if, for counties now, calling them the crazies lovely, affectionately, the legislators in Austin are right now talking about changing some of these rules and regulations. But right now, the rules are May or November, may of odd number of years for counties. So if you don't call the election for this November, you can't do it in May of an even number of years. It has to be November the following year. So right now, we're set up. There's a two-week period to call elections for November. It's kind of in August. I can't be here at the August 12th meeting because I have another county that's borrowing money that, that actual meeting. So the bond lawyer will be here to talk to you about the actual legal part of the call for the election. But I wanted to come today, talk about the latest facts and figures. And I know the facts and figures just changed as of yesterday. So I didn't get that yesterday afternoon. I have some numbers to share with you. But how counties borrow money, call election, voters approve it November, then we would do, we would issue the bonds. And so the way we issue the bonds is about a three, three or four month process. We prepare offering. What we recommend is a competitive market sale. There's a thing called the bond market. The bond market is basically banking firms that lend money. And software tools allow us, the broker-dealer, I'm a licensed, been a securities expert, several securities licenses, allow us to take your little debt offering here and publish it to the world, let them bid on lending you money. And we conduct a competitive market sale. It's all done electronically. And the bids come in, the lowest bid wins, and you get the lowest interest rate available to you on that date. So that's what we believe in. And so that process, we prepare the offering documents, we secure a credit rating. It kind of doesn't have a credit rating because you haven't borrowed money. And that takes about a month to do that. You can use S and P, Moody's, or Fitch. There's three credit ratings. We get a credit rating, and then we conduct the market sale. And then it takes, the bond lawyer's about 30 days to get AG approval and everything, all the paperwork done, and you have your money in the bank in about 30 days after the bond sale. So that's what will happen after the bond, if the bond election is successful. There's about a 30-day period after the bond election for protest period and for all the legal stuff. You have to canvass the election and the protest period to say, sometime December, you say, let's get started. We put the debt issuance process and have your money in February or March. Okay, so that's what would happen after the election. Okay? So how are you gonna pay for that? All right? That's the number one thing. So as of last week or so ago, I got the latest assessed valuation from your appraisal district. This is where you're upcoming, up here. Now, I've been doing these projections for you for about 10 years, and those numbers have gone up and down over the years. But this is your latest assessed valuation for Trinity County. And the bottom line, the freeze-adjusted number, $1.2 billion is the asset value of the county that you base your operating budget on. And I was assured by your appraiser that that's the number we would use to set your INS tax rate. So right now, for the last several years, I have the history here. On my phone, I can give it to you. You have not had an INS tax rate since, your last debt was paid off in 2019, so your, your tax rate has just been M and O basis operations.
Twenty-one. Was it twenty-one?
It looks to me, and this is from the MAC website, your debt was paid off, or last time you set an INS tax rate was, was 2019.
I think, right? I was sitting here. We paid this courthouse off in 21. It was supposed to be paid off in '22, but we paid it off in '21.
Well.
Okay. We'll go on.
Go back and look at the records, but from the assessment. Yeah, you're right. Because I don't remember that.
Yeah, we paid it off in '21.
That was my first year in.
I don't know if we tapped that in or whatever, but anybody mistake.
All right. Well, that's, that's the MAC website. I have to go back and check that. So as you know, though, your tax rate is an M and O for base operations and INS taxes. The legislature dictates how much you can raise your M and O tax. Right now, they do not regulate your INS tax as far as how much you can raise. You tell the lender, you're gonna assess a tax to pay him back. And so they allow you to set that rate and whatever the value is that you need to pay the debt payment. So that could change, but right now, that's the, that's the law of the land.
Mr. Rosenberg, you said that could change. Is that kind of what's been being talked about in the current legislative legislature session?
They talk about two different things every session. And I don't try to, but I know they talked about doing away with that. But I don't know how they could, because all these governments have made these pledges to these lenders that they're gonna set an INS tax sufficient to pay the debt. So they could maybe change it going forward. They'd have to give you some kind of time period to get through with that. I, you know, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I can't anticipate what they're gonna do. But every year, they talk about doing something. All right? So here's the latest tax rate analysis that we did as of yesterday, based on two values that I've heard for the jail and then also adding the sheriff's office. And this is just to borrow the money, finance the jail, and go to sheriff's office.
Hey, Ben, you just heard about the sheriff's office. Ben in there yesterday?
Yes.
Me too. That was the first I've heard of it. But go ahead with the program.
All right. So on the first page, we have the two options. Scenario one, 16650 number, which we've been talking about for three months now as possible in the new jail. And the second scenario is the 18750, which would include the sheriff's office. So those are the two numbers that we ran. And we have, our assumption is that we would borrow next February timeframe. All right? And then we would not have a payment due. So these payments are due semi-annually. And since you assess your taxes in the fall, they're due before February, before the tax, before the, you know, your penalty goes up. Most taxes come in, in that October to February timeframe or in the January timeframe. So we have first payments due not till August 15 to 2026. So you almost have a full, you have one interest payment due in August of that year, and then your principal payments are due the following February. Okay, so that, we have two payments a year, one principal payment in February, and then an interest, and then interest only in August each year going forward. So with that said, we're assuming the current market rate today is about 4.75% for 20 years based on our, we don't have a credit rating because it is on a single A credit, which we think we would, we could get. And then your assessed valuation on the 1.6, 1.16 value, 1.2 value. All right, she picked up the one from last year. The 1.16 is out, so that, that's the next page. So bottom page one, there, page two, those are two options based on the values from last year. Maximum tax increase with a 16.65 option was nine, nine and a half cents, 9.6 cents. And in the scenario two, a little bit over 10 cents. About a penny difference in those two, those two scenarios. And we'll show you all the assumptions. Now, on these pages, everything, everything is variable except the debt payment. So if you look at page two, it's your, your assessed valuation history for the last 20 years. That was gone for 480,000, now 1.2 billion. And, and you look at the, so that's not, you know, you might have some down years. So let's look at the last 10-year average growth rate was about 6.1%. Last five, five years, about 8.2%. That's the true math of what your assessed valuation has grown. So we don't like to be that aggressive. We like to be a little bit more conservative. We took, first, you know, we're gonna take the lowest number off this page, all right? And then if you look at the next page, first option, this is page three at the bottom, 1.6 million. And here's the 1.2 value this year. And we're just gonna show a 3% growth for five years. We don't want it to go 8%. Let's just go 3% growth for five years. And the middle column is the, the debt payment's about 1.3 billion for the next 20 years. And that would equate to a, a nine cent tax increase just for the debt payment. Okay? And then option two, everything is, is considered the same.
Excuse me, is that, that's just for the debt?
Just for the debt. That's all I'm talking about is just the debt.
Okay. Right. What's the percentage that it goes up just for the debt?
Nine cents.
But I guess based on the current, I guess, how would you say the percent increase on current tax rate from the debt?
Well, I don't know what your current tax rate is. It was 53 cents the past year. Yeah. So.
20%.
Yeah, I don't know what rate you're probably thinking about this year. Just talk about your next year.
Next year.
Twenty percent sounds about right?
Whatever that is.
This is what I'm hearing out here. Okay.
Ben, this sheet that you're, you're on number three?
Yes, sir.
It's a, it's on the 16650.
Correct.
And it'll pay off in 2046.
Correct.
So the jail would actually cost 26 million, 355.
Correct.
Okay. I'm with you. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's about 10,000, 10 days of interest over that 20, 20-year payment.
10 days.
Yeah, that's correct. Now, these normally will have what they call a 10-year call feature. So after 10, they want, lender wants you to make payments for 10 years. After 10 years, you could renegotiate or re, or pay it off early without any kind of penalty. That's sort of standard in the bond business. So if you pay it off early, you pay off some of the interest. And you can't, you can make extra principal payments, but they come off the back end like a home mortgage. You're not gonna change your payment. Your payment will be fixed. So the only thing on this page here that's fixed is the debt payment. Everything else is variable. If your rates go up, if your, if your assessed valuation goes up 8%, then you won't need a nine cent tax increase that year. It's gonna be less. All right? If your rates go, if your assessed valuation goes down, it's gonna be over the nine cents that year. It's gonna vary based on what your assessed valuation does. But based on your history, 3% is fairly conservative. Now, that could change. All right? So.
And I might not be understanding this, but you said after we do the bonds, then we'll have to raise taxes by 3% for five years?
No, no. This is assessed valuation. So we have to make some assumptions. We don't know what's gonna happen the next 20 years. I will probably be alive the next 20 years. All right? So based on your history, the last 20 years, your assessed valuation has gone from 428 to 1.2 bit, 428 million to 4.2 bit. The last 10 of those years, that was 6% increase. Just look at the last 10. The last five, that's eight. So we're gonna make an assumption it's only gonna go up 3%. We wanna be conservative. I can take that out if you wanna take the growth out altogether. All right? I think that's conservative. It's a conservative approach. So we're saying your AV is gonna go up 3% for five years. After that, we held it flat. We have nothing after five years, because we don't know. All right? So that's just an assumption. But based on your 20-year history, we feel that's a.
It's a conservative appraisal value?
Appraisal value. Your freeze-adjusted appraisal value, not your market value, that's what you're gonna base this debt payment on. So each year, your appraiser's gonna give you this page. He's gonna give you that bottom line number. You're gonna, now, here's my fixed payment. You're gonna do the math, and he's gonna tell you that's gonna equate to a nine cent, eight cent, 10 cent INS tax rate to cover that debt payment, based on what your appraiser gives you each year when you're setting your budget. This will be fixed. This varies. I'm assuming this is gonna go up 3% a year for the next five years and then flat at 1.39 for the record duration. If it goes up to 1.5 or 1.6, your payment's gonna go down. Your INS, I mean, your payment's gonna stay the same. Your rate's gonna move in to cover the debt. It just really depends on this. This is the only thing you're pledging. You're pledging up to the lender. You're gonna, you're gonna set a tax rate based on this value to cover your debt payment.
So, so Ben, two, the INS can be more than 3.5% increase, because that's not covered with the cap.
That's not covered with the cap.
So that's just getting your tax rate just to pay the.
Pay the debt. You're, you're.
Then that's what that is. It had to do with thing, do with operation and other than, okay?
Right. So you might have a big.
No, I know he's just here about the bill.
Banker that's gonna lend you this money. They don't know where Trinity County is in the state. They're gonna look at your credit rating. They're gonna look at your, your, your values. They're gonna say, we'll lend you that money because you're pledging taxes to pay for it.
Yeah. Right, I understand what you're saying. I just wanted, just wanted to know there's no cap on the INS.
There's no cap on the INS.
But then the operational part, if, yeah. Gary, do you have any questions?
No, so far.
These are, that's.
That's Gary?
Yes.
We talked on the phone, huh?
Yes, sir.
If you just pay, always you raise taxes, but we can have you see them or hear.
No, no INS.
No, no.
No, no.
So y'all get like, there's like a 15-page worksheet that tells you what your.
That's just the payment.
Goes through the, the, no new revenue rate, the voter approval rate, the rollback rate, those. So they do that also for the INS portion once you, if you have any debt. You haven't had any debts since, my records are 19. You say 21. So you just gave them your operations, and they told you what those, those rates are, no new revenue rate. And that can change too. The legislature can change that. It used to be effective rate and rollback rate. Now it's no new revenue rate and, and voter approval rate. So those things might change also throughout the year, but the INS rate is separate. And they'll tell you, they'll, they'll help you do that calculation based on this worksheet they gave you. You tell them, so our debt payment is, and then they calculate the INS rate each year.
So, yeah, what happens is that after the INS is set, the debt, then comes in the 3.5 cents about the operations. This office can go in.
That's why I was confused, because I thought we had to raise taxes in addition to the bond to cover the operation.
Yeah, so that's a separate issue than what Ben is.
Yeah, this.
According to this, he, you know, he's talking about just.
Just to be a cost.
Oh, man, you can't just speak to the operation.
No, no operation.
Taxes don't raise both sides. You know, you're gonna raise it, if the bond passes, the taxes are gonna go up. And then, and then when it's built, when it's built.
3.5 cents.
We're gonna go up 3 and 1/2 cents for, for years.
Eight hundred years just to operate.
And, okay. That's, I guess that's my confusion, because I thought that, but this is something else. It's a crazy value that's factored into INS.
Yes, that's with debt payment.
IS, interest and sinking, right? That's, that's different than operations. That's the M and O side. So when you hear Ben or I talk about that, that's, those are two completely different tax rates being set. If the bond passes, that's gonna help us set an INS rate to cover what is going on here. And then the only question would be, you know, Ben's making assumptions based on historical data, right? That shows, okay, we've seen this, a pretty phenomenal growth rate, but now we're starting to see that kind of flatten out a little bit. And so that's where he's saying, we're just gonna hold that 3% for five years. And then we can't make any assumptions past that five years here. And so, and so then that's where the big question comes in is, you know, is that a fair assumption? Right now, I think that's a very fair assumption. Of course, when you see data from comptroller's office, then you, you question that a little bit just to the fact that they're projecting a decline in population here. But does that necessarily equate to a projected tax decrease? I don't think so. So 3%, you know, what, what Ben is saying is a very fair, I think, conservative. They're not saying, hey, we're projecting this 3% out for the 20 years or anything like that, right? They're just saying, hey, for the next five years, we think we'll still can see an increase in our tax base there.
Yeah. Just the 10, the INS would probably just say 10 cents, probably 0.0968, so it's same 10 cents.
Yeah, and then real scenario two, right? Which is the, the cost of offices in there. That's that 0.1090.
Yeah, but he had one else that sheet. We've got.
Well, it's, it's part of the same piece that we're going over.
Anything else on page three? It, it shows actually that the first year while we're building the jail, we have one interest payment. We did have one interest payment. We can schedule that later if we need to. It shows a 3 cent increase for the current, for the, for the next fiscal year in 20627. But we can push that back if we need to. That was just at your cell, February. You need to have a payment within a year. We just had it in August, but we can push it after October if we need to. So, but just wanted to point that out. It does show a little 3 cents that first year, but we can, we can work around that if we need to. We don't, we don't know exactly when you're gonna issue the debt, the debt issuance. So the difference in three and four is just the total dollar amount. And again, the same assumptions, assessed valuation, the 1.2 billion, 3% increase for five years, the due payment about a little over 1.4 million, shows a tax rate increase at about 10, well over 10 cents, almost 11 cents. Almost 11 cents. And that's a 98% collection percentage.
Yeah, then your, your interest rate will go from 26 total to 29, almost 30 million. So those offices would cost 3, 3 million, 300,000 dollars with offices. A little more than that after the interest.
Again, there's no decision has to be made today. It's between now and August 12th. You have to decide two things. Are you gonna call the election and how much? Right, this is my, I couldn't be on the 12th, so I wanted to come talk about numbers today and see what any questions you might have that I could answer.
Well, if we do this jail, let's say it's a bill, it costs about 20% increase in taxes, and that's covered during the bond election.
Right. 20, if you calculate 20%, yeah.
Then, then when we start operating, then we gotta raise it another 10%.
I don't know that.
Let's just say 10% just for talking. If we can only raise taxes 3 and 1/2% per year, how are we gonna get up to the 10% operation?
You have to start from the bond. First time you get the tax increase, start that.
You have to start?
Yeah.
And then the jail is vacant, and then the next year the jail is vacant until you get it up again?
Well, you ought to, he explained that to me more than you. You want to explain that to them about how the money is, if the first year is interest and.
Oh, so while the money is sitting in the bank, you can earn interest on it.
Well, that's smart. Smart, where we learn in it.
Up, up to the point.
Brilliant.
Up to the point with the interest that you're paying. So you're borrowing the taxes in rate, the IRS is not allowing you to borrow at 4.7 and make investments up to 6 or 8%. They will not allow that. So you could, if your interest rate's 4.7% interest that you're paying, you can earn on your investments close to that now. So for that first year or so, you, you might, you might pay for that first interest payment. Depends on what your investments that you can get through the, your investments, while the money's sitting in your bank account. That's the first year, okay? I'm not talking about operations. You know, I've done all the research on operations. I know you're spending, as of 2023, I have your audit here, you spent $800,000 to ship prisoners. All right, that's gonna go away after that, for after the jail's built. So you have to just net that number against your operation cost. So that's only to know what's in your audit.
Our treasurer's got a process. He's got, and added that back in there and has discussed, you know, he's got it.
So it'll be a year or two that you're gonna have both. You're gonna be, you're gonna have debt payment, and then you're gonna be shipping prisoners. But after that time, the shipping prisoners will go away, that cost, that you have operation cost.
But you will be making that note plus shipping them.
While you're building, you have to.
Do a double.
That's correct. But like I said, the first year maybe only a $400,000 payment. I prefer that payment, the first year, so I can get you a year. And then you're gonna, with no payment, and then you can earn interest to help offset that in 4% on, on $16 million, that's a chunk of money. So.
Say, Gary?
Go ahead.
Gary, I'm hearing two different things. I thought we can raise, is it 3 and 1/2% or 3 and 1/2 cents?
3 and 1/2 percent.
Percent, cents.
So Ben, this is figured at 4.75% interest.
Correct.
Now, once it's set, if the interest rate goes down, that they gonna, we're locked in.
Locked in.
We're gonna be locked in. If Trump gets it down to 1% or whatever, we're gonna be locked in at this.
For 10 years.
For 10 years?
Yes.
You cannot renegotiate up until 10 years. That's what you said.
That's what you're telling.
So after 10, you can go refinance it?
Right. And we used to do, when the interest rates were low, it's about 30% of our business was refinancing debt. And, and we're not doing any of that now because the rates are high. So yes, that would be, you can knock on your door to refinance the debt. You can do it.
But to, to that point now, I wanted to steal your, Ben, by any means, because what we're getting in a, in a high-yield money market account, in a bond market, those do, those aren't necessarily the same thing. So while our interest rate's gonna drop drastically as soon as the Fed starts cutting rates, that doesn't necessarily mean the bond market's immediately gonna fall there. Those a lot of times are inversely related. So just keep that in the back of your mind. It could actually work the other way as well, so, but, you know, Ben, point.
You'd be locked in.
For 10 years.
Or like we said, your mortgage on your house, you're just locked in. You need to refinance or pay it off.
Well, three of us won't be here 10 years to become it, so it'll be easy for us.
I'm not a boy.
I, I got Ben, you included.
I ain't no boy.
Okay, the first, first year, so we get this INS increase, do we factor the 3.5% against that the first year? See what I'm saying?
No, no, the 3.5% has nothing to do.
Okay, but I'm talking about, I know it's INS. It's, we don't have to.
We would need to, to get prepared for the M and O side of things.
That's what I'm saying.
That is a separate thing from the INS. It would go on our M and O, but.
Correct.
We'd have to increase that, you know, to, over the next few years to get that where we can operate.
Right, something says about you, isn't that correct here? On that 3 and 1/2 percent? We'd have to go up to cover the overhead.
That's on.
Oh, you're speaking of all the jail?
Yeah.
Yes, on the, on the M and O side.
M and O side, strictly.
So you're getting ready to go into the pledge process right now, right? He's gonna give you the calculations based on your new values, right? What your no new revenue rate is, what your voter. What your, no new revenue rate is, what your voter approval rate is. And so, uh, you're gonna set your budget accordingly, given in those parameters. And each year he's gonna do that. So that's for your maintenance operations. And that maintenance operations is jail, sheriffs, and road, and bridge, all those subjects you do for maintenance operations.
So Ben, do you have anything to do with the, put it on the ballot? Or knowing how it's worried on the ballot or anything like that?
That's gonna be Johnson, Fred. The bond lawyer does have, they, they've sent some election documents, uh, some sample election, or some election documents for us to fill in just to, to, uh, uh, but we, we work with a dollar partner, back to the section in the back that says how much is the, the debt payment? This is like the sample, the sample ballot.
I guess my question is, if we put it on the ballot.
Right.
Option A, option B. Sixteen, six fifty. Or let's put them good offices in there for eighteen, seven seventy-five.
I heard about this option yesterday afternoon.
I did too.
I called the bond lawyer and that is not, you're not allowed to do that. Election law does not allow you to do two competing options.
That was my question.
You can do A, jail, B, sheriff's office. Two separate distinct options, not advisable. Or would they approve of sheriff's office without a jail? And, you know, so that's not why we started this process. So, uh.
Okay.
So really, that's what between now and twelve.
Or no facility.
Eight, yeah.
I think it says four or against.
Right.
No.
Yeah. Nine or ten cents, I mean, to me, if it was nine versus fifteen cents, okay. Nine versus ten, if you're gonna do it. I mean, I, I thought the difference would be bigger. I thought the cents would have a bigger difference. But that's the way the numbers work. So it's, uh, based on your values, it's only another penny. Let's do the sheriff's office included.
Well, I'm looking at the final number, twenty-six million versus twenty-nine.
Right. Yeah, that's two million plus, two million plus interest for forty years. Yeah.
I'd just like to know how it got there. From the time we started, it was a jail, we were building. How did the offices get it by a judge?
We had a lead question. We needed the sheriff. He presented some papers, I guess, Jeremy. Jeremy, did you put, right, send that to Benny?
I agree.
Uh, did you send the papers to Benny about the, that the sheriff has to sign off on it?
As far as the sheriff's approval of the plans?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a plan, not of offices. So, uh.
Yes, uh, the sheriff's, the sheriff has to sign off on it before it approved, the plans will be submitted.
And that's what.
That came into play shortly after that Zoom meeting we had, is my understanding. Benny presented it.
And the board was the one that done it.
We lost this on that.
Board didn't do it, Danny. I, me and Steve trusted on that call. The board didn't do it.
Well, they kept what is because the other ones won't.
Okay. Play the other ones, buddy.
We had meetings for years and we finally came up with the cheapest route possible. We tried to, to get a whole of this building, but it got cheap. But nobody wanted that. So the next option was this jail with sixty beds and no offices. That's the next cheapest option that we've come up with. And, and that's what we voted on in the jail committee meeting. And now it's already changed, I didn't know nothing about it, to a jail with offices and it's another two million dollars added to it.
Yeah, it was my understanding that we were talking about this in the jail committee meeting, that it was gonna be the jail and later on, if we got financially able, we would add offices onto it. Is that right, Steve?
Well, I guess I'll tell you my part of it. I'm out on the jail committee, but I just set the meeting yesterday with the sheriff and the chief deputy and the judge. I was a little, I was one or two minutes late to the meeting, showed up, got in there. The offices were added in there. They already started talking about the offices, uh, this and this. I talked to the chief deputy two different times in the past week and I've asked him about, and he can clarify it. And I've asked him, hey, is sheriff, is okay with not having these offices in there, correct? Does the sheriff know how the office is not in there? Yeah, he hadn't mentioned nothing, but the dispatch is the issue. Dispatch is the issue being there, but they did clarify in the blueprints by the dispatcher. But it does, it does, they hashed that out and it did. Uh, so the officers will do to me as of yesterday as well. Uh, I know you're not here to talk about the operations side of it. It's, it's gonna, I asked the sheriff and, and the chief deputy yesterday, does this make sense or does it not make sense? You know, we're adding two more million to it when we're having to raise taxes for the first sixteen million. We're not, we're not gonna be able to afford it. So I, I don't know if that makes sense or not. I mean, don't to me, but, uh, I was under the impression, the jail is the issue. We have a jail problem. Everybody knows I was a cop for a long time. I know what they go through every day. There is an issue, finding beds and all that. The offices are not at the moment, you know? I don't, I don't know how we can get over this. I don't know how, uh, we're gonna get the people to vote on this and just keep bad and still bad and stuff like that.
Well, my concern is this. Most of our counties, either work for TDC, stuff like that, and they, they have a rough time to begin with it. I mean, if we're going to bond with it, that's awesome. People vote for it, that's great. Not opposed to that. What I have is how much we're gonna have to tax these younger people. Mine's broken, my barn's not. Gary, let me know. Well, I built it real cheap too, Gary, remember that. But anyways, that's not, I, I'm concerned about all these young, we're talking about going to forty-six. And right now, some of these young people struggle. And I mean, but if the people say yes is yes. But I, I have a concern for somebody else than I me, not him, not Neil. But these young people just gonna end up having to pay for all this stuff. Like I said, I'm not opposed to, if the people want a jail, that's.
To follow up with Neil, he said, you talked about, he said, there's no way to do proposition A, proposition B, like school.
Can't do it.
No, no, I've, I've seen the proposition before.
You can, but it's separate and distinct, it's not a combined issue.
But he said, if you put it on there, offices, jails. Now, they approved offices and didn't get the jail, then what would you be?
I got you. Yes, right.
They will pay.
That does lead into the last page, I hadn't gotten to.
Okay.
How much is it gonna cost an average homeowner?
Yeah.
That's really what it's all about, right?
Speak loudly.
Okay.
Clearly, where everybody can hear.
All right, so the last page, page five, shows maximum, maximum annual tax increase based on all those assumptions. Based on that annual payment, based on your assessed valuation history, and then based on your taxable value of your house, right? Not your praise value, not what you can sell it for, what you're paying taxes on. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, your taxable value, scenario one, ninety-six dollars a year, ninety-six dollars and thirty cents a year. Option two, a hundred and nine dollars and three cents a year. So your taxes, if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, are gonna go up. Ninety-six thou, ninety-six dollars and thirty cents a year, or a hundred and nine dollars, three cents a year. If your median value for the county is two hundred and eight, cut that off the whips, off the internet, I know it's right. Your hundred and eight median value, so that increase is two hundred thousand dollars and twenty-nine cents for scenario one, for just a jail. Jail first, first adding to the sheriff's office, two hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy seven cents a year. So that's what it means to the homeowner, so it's, you know.
But anybody that's over sixty-five is locked. So it, it won't affect them, Gary?
That's correct. Their taxable value is locked?
It's froze.
Is that factored in?
But your she shared across the road will, is will affect.
Yes.
Right, the she share.
Whatever your taxable value is, if it's whatever it is, however it's calculated, your taxable value you get on your taxes.
Yeah.
It's time that nine or eleven cents, and that equates to that amount of money.
I understand. But you kinda did this off of averages and everything like that. And so it would skew it a little bit if a large portion of our county was locked in at a rate where it couldn't be raised. It would skew it.
That, all those taxable values, the whole county wide, we want it this number right here, our freeze adjusted tax value. I mean, your freeze adjusted, that's what we're basing on. This is after all the freezes.
Three hundred dollars to a hundred thousand.
Well, if you give a three hundred thousand dollar house, it's gonna be three hundred, three hundred point seven dollars, three hundred, two hundred and eight dollars. Depending on the value of your taxable value on your property. You have a big ranch and you have half a million dollars value, it's gonna be higher. Higher than this. I only went to three hundred thousand on this analysis.
Gary, you've been overcharging them.
So that, that's taken then, all the freeze, people that have been, have their taxes freeze, that's into the bottom line number. So that's what that increase is based on, your taxable value after the freeze.
And again, that's just for the, the bond side of it.
So the maintenance operation costs that have to be increased, it's not factored?
Oh, that is five, six years.
Just to pay the debt.
Right. That just, INS has to just like pay.
Gary, the, can we increase maintenance and operation costs to this special election? Is that possible?
That's, that's what would require, yes.
What's that called?
Uh, it's just where you go above the voter approval rate.
So in other words, if we have to increase ten percent of maintenance and operators jail, we'll have to have another election to raise taxes enough to operate. Unless we wait several years to increase it three and a half percent per town, right?
Yes.
Now, go ahead and tell him, Gary, if you take it to the voters, all that ten percent to operate, and they vote it down, where's the money gonna come from? It'll come out of the rock. You ain't gonna buy a humble rock road, you're gonna buy a dirt road. The county's got to pay.
Stephen, I understood it with them, I'm gonna be sad with his. You can raise it that three and a half percent, or if you go for the special election, you can raise it.
You can raise it, you can raise it to full ten, special election.
So, but if that fails, you don't even get that three and a half percent for that year. So you set yourself back a year, correct?
If, if it fails, you go back to the previous year.
Yeah, you don't even get the, you, you can't even have the option to add that three and a half percent.
That's correct, that's true.
Well, you can't do both of these at the same time, right?
I don't know about that.
Your M and O, uh, budget, you can begin increasing when we adopt our budget this year.
Call me up next year. Three and a half percent, just gonna do it here.
You do all of that without an election.
Yeah.
That's, that's the way you get to it. All the judges that I've talked to, that's the way to do it.
Right.
So over the next three years, you would be.
You set that three and a half percent aside.
Yep. Ten percent.
On the phone, you set that three and a half percent aside, three and a half percent, I said, sorry. And that, when it's built, when we open the doors on it, we've got that fund on the side. It's been built up for three years or however long it takes us to operate.
Ben, that's a good report you wrote this today.
Two things, we, we gotta, we need to decide if we're gonna sit at the bond and we need to decide which scenario, correct?
Correct.
Office foot, least of all.
At least be done before office foot. At least be done kind of assumed it's possible, right? If the numbers are John and Chris.
Well, yeah, we need to fill out, I mean, I guess you could fill out two, but you may actually need to know which one you'd like to fill.
Go over and you go, go over this sheet and explain this.
Yeah, so just my little side of that, of course, is, is really, we're just trying to come from the same numbers. Mine doesn't have the three percent increase included in it, uh, right, as a, as an adjustment over the next few years. I was just looking clearly at where our tax rate is right now, and amortization schedule, what does that look like? Uh, and again, actually, because Ben's interest rate is actually a little higher than what I have in my analysis, the overall payment's actually, um, a little higher than Ben's analysis there. But again, mine was just looking at, at a twelve month piece. Ben has, has highlighted some items, right, for us that show that we have some flexibility when we can make those, uh, interest payments and stuff like that, on that. And so, uh, but if you just look at what a, a monthly payment would be when we're full into it, right? No, no, uh, moving it around or paying it later, you know, our numbers are basically the same thing there. So then we're talking about the other side of that, which would be the M and O, uh, budget side. Uh, you know, in order to operate that, that's where, uh, you know, we're looking at sixty dollars a day per inmate to operate. And so when you, when you do that, if we, if we have sixty inmates in there, obviously that's thirty-six hundred dollars a day cost to, to house those inmates. That will vary, obviously, depending on how many inmates we have. But when you look at that, if you, if you assume that we keep that fully, um, I almost said stop. But if we keep that, uh, fully.
At capacity.
At full.
Best of our.
At capacity, um, then that, that would be the thirty-six hundred dollars a day. And in order to, to look at that, based on, uh, some previous numbers, and I don't have the twenty twenty-five certified total in this yet. Uh, so that will adjust slightly. But looking at that, we, we would say, hey, you know, at three hundred sixty-five days, and then we're, we're, you know, talking about basically a little over eleven cent increase. However, we would add back in our annualized contract jail space, uh, that we've been paying other counties and bring that back in. And when you do that, we would net, uh, still a tax increase of, uh, basically a little over six cents at that point um, to, to cover that. So again, these numbers will tweak slightly now that I have the new certified totals here and we can tweak that slightly. But the, the numbers overall are very close, so. Uh, so basically, that would be on the M and O side, you know, at three hundred sixty-five days, fully staffed. We're talking at about twelve cents. But then we would be adding back in our, our little over six cents, right, from contracted jail space, since we wouldn't have to do that anymore. So that's gonna net us about a six cent increase on the M and O budget side. That is completely separate from the INS bond side, which of course is the numbers you see in front of you there. So the M and O side, we'd have to, to, to get to that, uh, six cent increase basically, right? If you do that as a percentage, obviously, as a percentage, it's, uh, much higher, right? So, uh, that's where you would, uh, go through.
All of that's not gonna be savings. When you save all the money we're spending in the house, inmates out, you've got lights and water and gas.
That's included in the sixty dollars a day.
I understand that.
That's already included in that number.
Well, when you open this jail, it's gonna cost some money to run it.
Right. That's the sixty dollars a day.
That's the, that's what.
Sixty dollars.
That's what every surrounding county.
Yeah.
He's, he's checked with his other places and that's figured into the system. That's, that's their bottom dollar that they can house and afford their officers.
And utilities included, your food.
Utilities, payroll, the food.
Laundry.
Right. That is M and O only.
Yeah.
Do we know their averages for our jail population people? Like what is our average that we have currently?
Probably shouldn't go up.
Well, yeah, but I mean, just an average.
That we're paying, uh, to contract house.
That we house here and that we house up here.
So you, you mean just the total?
Total average.
Yes, it's quite a bit higher than the sixty dollars a day currently.
No, how many people?
Your population, your average, local population, what you're asking for.
Yeah.
Like, or you're sort of outnumbering the people.
So you're saying, we got sixty beds, thirty people, we could contract jail space out to other counties that don't have.
Potentially, but you can't make a financial.
I know, you can't make a financial decision on that.
Because there's other counties that have, uh, tried to do that, to get themselves in a bind.
But the potential is there.
Right, right.
So to forty, to forty-eight, forty-eight people, you can, you're supposed to stay below fifteen percent capacity.
Correct.
So if we're averaging thirty-three, one of those, you do fifteen-ish, if, if that's the case. But sometimes, you know, it's been down and sometimes it's gone up.
Right, just depending on.
Because they're charging us, but some of them are charging us seventy-five dollars a day for our inmates.
Yeah. Well, this code has, but you can, you can.
You can't make, I'm just, you can't, you can't make fun of.
Right, so, so really. Right, so, so really.
You don't go into, you don't go into building a jail trying to like.
No.
That's, that's, that's directly from the jail commissioner.
Absolutely, don't come in.
Hey, no, this is, this is made in two oh eight, scenario one, they, they'd see a two hundred dollar tax increase. With the M and O, MO or whatever it is, you gotta raise it up, what would that number likely be?
Uh, for that, I don't have it factored out per, I just had it kind of split out in a percentage there, but, um.
Well, if raising it twenty-odd percent, bonus it up to two hundred dollar increase, plus a six percent increase.
Well, it's a six cent.
Six cent.
Six cent, again, we're not talking percentage here, so, um.
We just look at percentage right at the bottom.
Okay.
You're raising it with the taxes, this is, I guess, scenario two I'm looking at, I guess.
Yeah.
You're raising it just for the bonds, twenty-three percent, and that's twelve cents, which would be on a hundred thousand dollar house, would be a hundred and nine dollars, so, and then for total, with the M and O side, and the bond is thirty-three, so you're looking at ten percent raise, so I guess, I guess a third of that, I guess, or, or, or half of that, I guess, would be.
Whatever they're paying that.
So you're looking at. If it's a hundred dollars, then you're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars. Within those.
Yes.
If it's a hundred dollars in there.
Yeah.
Ben, do you have any more?
No, no, I mean, just, uh, basically, this question, I mean, a two hundred and eight thousand dollar house, with your current tax rate, you're currently paying eleven hundred and twenty-one dollars, and that would go up by two hundred and twenty-six dollars, or two hundred, two hundred dollars. Your current tax rate, current county tax rate is five three nine oh, if your average median household was two hundred and eight thousand.
Ah, okay.
Current taxes are eleven twenty-one.
That's what I was getting to.
Eleven twenty-one would go up.
Okay.
Two hundred dollars, so go from eleven hundred to thirteen hundred.
It was like, okay, I understand.
You're already paying that much, right? Just your, what your M and O now is, is now.
Oh, I guess, yeah, I kinda correspond to what I was thinking before, I was just different numbers, same percentages, values, I don't know.
Any other questions for me?
Oh, Ben, good, I believe, but I do have one for the judge. Since the day we first started talking about building the jail, I brought this up at every meeting about the infrastructure over here, that's how we built the building. I wanna know if the water and the sewer is gonna be, be there, or is it gonna be enough to run a jail system? Well, you're saying that, but you're not an engineer or architect, I want somebody to tell us before we vote on it, it's gonna be embarrassing to build a jail, and then you can't run it because the water and sewer is not licensed, and you have to house them out and pay the note too. That's my biggest problem, I wanna know that it's gonna work. And you're gonna have to talk to whoever their engineer is, or, or architect or something.
Go with it.
I mean, that, that would be terrible, that's a concern, it's better to start from day one, and I don't care if you build it in Woodland, I don't care where you build it. I'm not pushing to build it in Trinity or nothing like that, I'm just saying, is the infrastructure here today to run that jail? We'll work it off of, getting to the water supply.
Only answer I can give you, and I'm not an engineer either, but I do know that the city has got a four million dollar grant, that, that, I don't know when they're gonna start, but they're going to, you probably have to look inside of that, but they're gonna start upgrading all their system, putting new water wells in and stuff like that.
And how long is that gonna take?
That's why I said I don't know.
Yeah.
They just got their money, so they're, they're starting.
They'll be done before your first.
Okay. That, that's, that's a question, because if you build it, ladies, I'm sorry, the pool has to run down hill, so you gotta have the sewer to handle that, and I'm talking about, you're talking about a big increase in water and sewer. Do you have the water to handle, how far out are you gonna build, you gotta have drainage stations to push it. All of that, I, I can tell you that, but I'm not the engineer, and I know what we have to do. So, as long as it's there, that is a major concern, not only with you, but a lot of people that I've worked on.
I'll have to.
Me.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Say.
All in favor?